Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 6th, and the time is 1:01 PM. Security has the front lobby been cleared? Thank you. We are here today for the school board briefing meeting today. Welcome. Wanted to let everyone know that member Patrica has a personal issue at the moment, so she may be arriving late. So we have five items on the agenda today, so let's proceed to item one. Item one is construction change order, and we have Mr. Director Rickenbauer.
Rosemary.
Rickenbacher, sorry about that. You're ready to proceed, sir?
Yes, sir. So I heard you mention the change order report first. Typically, we do the capital update first, and then the change order report.
Okay. Proceed, please.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Burnier?
Scott, can you check your microphone?
Go ahead.
Now we can't. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Burnier, Esquire de Prairie Bruno. This is your quarterly construction capital update. Assisting me today on the maintenance side of house is Assistant Director of Maintenance Tony Dent McNair, who will be reporting the maintenance projects and the capital update. For the new board members, just a quick update as to why we do this. This is a quarterly ability for us to show the work that we in our department and Operations Division are doing on behalf of the students. And the actual change order report is something that's required by the state every month that we indicate to you what change orders and expenditures. So you'll see the change order report every month, you'll see the quarterly report every quarter. So we have phases of our projects, which are our procurement phase, where you actually engage. We have design phase, we have construction phase, we have closeout phase. So we always start out with the procurement phase. So on these particular slides, we have nine projects that are currently in the procurement phase. Eight of the projects are maintenance projects that are budgeted through the capital plan that they have asked my construction divisions' project managers for oversight over the summer, and one is a five-year capital plan. The maintenance projects are Cape Coral High School re-roof, Cypress Lake High School HVAC, Cypress Lake Middle School, that is a COPS-funded, it will be the rebuilding custody of the Cypress Lake Middle School, Edgewood Academy HVAC, Fort Myers High School re-roof, Gulf Middle HVAC repairs, Royal Palm Exceptional HVAC repairs, South Fort Myers High re-roof, Spring Creek Elementary HVAC repairs. In addition, we enter into the design phase. We have approximately eight products in the design phase. Four are maintenance products, where my department provides oversight during that, and four are five-year capital plan projects. That includes the Alva School, plumbing renovation, Benita Springs campus renovation. That's where we're going into the historic building. We're correcting the structural deficiencies and doing some onsite work to improve the bus parent drop-off and food delivery service in the back house. Cape Coral Technical College, a single-point enhancement. Cypress Lake High School plumbing renovation, Harons Marsh Elementary, a traffic study. Pine Island Elementary, a plumbing renovation throughout the campus, and Villa Elementary, a plumbing renovation as well. In the construction phase, we have 15 active projects, so there's about three slides associated with this phase. Four are maintenance oversight projects, 11 or five-year capital plan projects. I'd like to make a note, I have an error on the very first one unfortunately, Amanas Sierra. We did come to the board on August 16th of 2022 for our Phase 2B total project cost approval. The approval that's shown there is 23 million. That was for the first shell package for an early start. The board approved another approximately 28 million. The total project cost that came to the board and was approved is for 56,568,109. That project is on time and on budget at this point.
Scott, can you repeat that figure again, please?
56-
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next up is Cypress Lake High School, Tucker's Lake High, and Astero High. These are ROTC towers. We've had to close down our tower program because our towers are unsafe. We had an architect from our continuing contract do design work, and we're getting prepared to rebuild those two towers. There was a third tower at the Riverdale High School site. That was going to be accomplished when we do the Riverdale renovation, which we're hopefully going to get a GMP and begin that work starting around February of 2023. Let's see. Fort Myers High School, a plumbing renovation. That's currently in the bidding stage. Franklin Parks Elementary, new construction. Right now, you've approved Phase 1. As you're all well aware, we're putting the portable campus, staging campus, across from James Stevens Academy. That is set to be open just before Christmas break over the next few weeks, moving people in so that once we come back from the holidays, we will begin demolition on January 15th of that old campus. Just a sidebar note, we're giving permission to the fire department, local fire department, possibly the police, so that they can go in there and use that building for training exercise once we evacuate all of any materials and things of that nature. Just gives them a good chance to practice those skill sets for emergencies. Again, we have Fort Myers Technical College. That's a campus renovation. That is ongoing. It's on schedule, on budget, and to be completed this summer. G Weaver Hips Elementary, that is a new addition building for a pre-K program. Right now, we're in the bidding phase. That was funded by the federal government, the design, and we're bidding it out to get a total project cost, and we'll be coming back to the board with a request to go to the next phase, which is Phase 2, and begin construction on there if it can be budgeted. Next on the list, Hector Cafareta Elementary. This is new construction of the portables. That's what's ongoing right now, and we're preparing to move them in as quickly as possible on that campus site, and that was for an amount of $19 million. And if you're not aware, that Hector Cafareta was one of the three major schools that occurred with water and flooding damage. And we, behind Cape Coral Technical College, we have had staging campuses previously in history at Lee County Schools behind there, and that's where we have staged that campus for Hector A. Cafareta Jr. Elementary. Next on the list, Lehigh Senior High, a re-roof renovation. That's in the bidding process. Lehigh Acres Middle School MM, that's his new addition. One year after the middle school was opened up, the numbers kept exploding in the East Zone, so we did an addition building on there. That is currently under construction, will be completed by March, ready for students to occupy either after March or more than likely August of 2023. North Fort Myers High School, renovation of the roof drains. We did redo North Fort Myers High School's roof. It held up through the storm. We had no leaks. Unfortunately, the drain bodies in there are older, and we found that they weren't able to support that, so we're changing out the drain body so that the entire roofing system is complete. But the roofing system itself did hold, and we had no issues on that particular school. Orangewood Elementary renovation HVAC Phase 1. This is Phase 1, and let me explain just real quickly. We have a process Phase 1 and Phase 2. This was an effort so that we don't have another Benita Springs High School issue. What this presents is we go into a Phase 1, which is seed money to hire on an architect, engineers, construction manager, and building officials. The architect provides a full set of buildable and permissible drawings, which we go out to bid. The construction manager and building official provide meeting support. We do value engineering, we do permitting, so that those drawings are in fact 100% complete. No surprises. Phase 1 ends when they supply to us what they call a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price. That GMP becomes embedded and part of a total project cost approval we come to the board to request, just like as Emily told you, 56 million for Amanas Sierra. Phase 2 begins when we start the actual, you guys approve the total project cost, and we send a notice to proceed, and we begin physical construction. That's when Phase 2 physically begins. So what it does is, there's no guesses here. When you approve a total project cost, the projects, the plans, the drawings have already been out competitively bid, compiled, and you're getting the actual cost. And at that moment in time, you may not have a desire to proceed, or you may tell me to hold off and further discussion, but it gives you the opportunity to know exactly what the all-in figure is going to be for that school build. We've been doing that on all of the new school builds ever since the Benita issue occurred. So I think it's been working fairly successfully. Let's see. Next is Orangewood Elementary HVAC renovation. Riverdale High School, new construction. Again, I just spoke about that. The design drawings are being completed. We're going out to bid, and we hope to bring you probably middle of February 2023, a GMP with a total project cost so that we can get into the Phase 2 work and begin that renovation of that campus. Last not least slide for construction phase, Royal Palm Exceptional Center. We're doing, creating a vestibule for an enhanced single-point entry at that campus. That campus did not have any vestibule whatsoever, so it was a little different than some of the other campuses you see. So we're actually creating an entry vestibule for the public, and that'll be completed August of 2023. Success Academy, we have a plumbing renovation slated for that, and Transportation East Buckingham, we have the new facilities building out there for that bus compound. Unfortunately, due to the storm, we are ready to go, but we haven't been able to get our power turned on by FPNL. They're at a point now where they can do that. Unfortunately, we need to shut down the entire power to the entire complex. So we're going to push that, and that prevents us from finishing our HVAC, our painting, and our floor goods in there, which will go quickly, but that'll probably have to be pushed until the winter break when school's out of session, so I'm not interrupting getting kids to school with the buses. So hence why you see a 12-1 finish date. That's why that's not there. I'll issue a no value or no dollar value increase, but as a time increase for substantial completion to that project. Next, we enter into Hurricane Ian remediation and stabilization. There are 24 projects listed on here. These were what the construction department had oversight on. They were considered medium and high-damaged facilities. Just take note that two of the facilities were actually low-damaged, but because they were next door to their sister middle schools, specifically Calusa Elementary and Diplomat Elementary, there's a combined kitchen and dining area back and forth between those two schools, so we wanted to have our remediation companies that do air quality testing go into those facilities and make sure that the air quality in those areas was okay, which they did. So in reality, they list 24, but of the real medium and high-damaged schools, it's only 22. And again, you can see all of the schools, they're ongoing. Most of the schools are done, with the exception of obviously Sanibel. We're currently moving forward, remediating that building. Fort Myers Beach Elementary, and then the decision as to how we move forward with Hector Cafareta. Closeout phase. You will see all these projects that have a dollar value associated in the project savings, whether it be zero or in a physical dollar value. We reported to you this time. The next report, they will drop off the list. We just try to let you know what it came in at, what any savings were, and what was coming back to the district coffers. So we had Cape Elementary HVAC renovation, Cape Coral High School enhancement, front entry, Cypress Lake enhancement, Cypress Lake Arts enhancement, Dunbar Community enhancement, Astero High enhancement, Fort Myers Middle Academy, we did a plumbing renovation. That's in the closeout phase. We're waiting for the final documents to come in. Fort Myers High School, single-point entry enhancement, Fort Myers High HVAC renovation, which I believe is on your agenda tonight for final approval pay. Gateway Elementary, we did a traffic study. Lee County Public Education re-roof. This building is complete, and I believe you're voting on final payout for that as well as tonight. So that's 26 projects closed and or closing. 14 projects were the single-point enhancement projects. Second sheet. You can see we're pretty busy. Second sheet, again, Lehigh Acres, single-point enhancement, Mariner Middle enhancement, Orangewood enhancement, Orangewood renovation. We do kitchen renovations for the food service. I have a project manager embedded in my department that does those every summer, wherever we have to update our food service areas. Ramacy Page, we did a traffic study. Spring Creek Elementary, single-point enhancement. Success Academy, early childhood YPEP, and I'm not going to get the acronym right, so you guys just rename that campus. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Sunshine Elementary renovation, kitchen complete. Sunshine Elementary, single-point enhancement. Tortuga Traffic Study, Veterans Park renovation. It's a portable campus. Veterans Park Academy renovation, single-point entry enhancement. Now, the renovation of the portable campus at Veterans Park, that occurred a year ago. That was our very first project in preparation for the renovation of what was the Old Lamb's School, is to put those portables in the back there to support the student population while we went in and we refurbished and gutted the interior of that building. So we're waiting for the final closeout paperwork from that vendor, so we can come to the board and bring that to closure. The Veteran Park single-point entry enhancement is complete. Closeout phase. Continued Veterans Park Academy, the Arts, the renovation of the campus, that came in at 17,693. We just are finalizing the final payouts, and then we will go into an audit phase on that project. Villa's Elementary Traffic Study is complete, and Villa's Elementary Single Point Entry Enhancement is complete. And that completes my report of the capital update. Are there any questions on the construction portion?
Mr. Superintendent, is there anything you'd like to add before we go to board comment?
Not necessarily. Just some quick, just some quick comments, if I would, if I may. I think important for the community to realize that we've tried to be as transparent as possible with how things are progressing with Hurricane Ian. I want to thank Mr. Rickenbacher and the construction facilities team for making those additions. I think it's really important for the community to see, these are just the stabilization and renovations. These have nothing yet to do with an ever-expanding list as we get into the final repairs for like a Diplomat Middle School and its roof. So you can see these projects, this Construction and Facilities Division is very busy, but they want to be very transparent with all of you as to what the projects are, where the funding comes from, where it's resolved. And I do appreciate Mr. Rickenbacher's attention to detail regarding cost savings, because not only does he tend to get things always done on time, there are many instances where they come in also under budget, and I think that's really important for our community to know. Lastly, I will just let him work with Amanas Sierra, in case there's any confusion about what school building he's talking about. He has multiple pronunciations for it, and I'm not saying anything he doesn't know, so I'm not picking on him. The other one is the YPEP. As you'll remember, that used to be referred to as the Lee Adolescents Mothers' Program, but we now have Teenage Dads. So it is now referred to as the Young Parent Education Program. So that's what YPEP stands for. Other than that, I'm looking forward to hearing your discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Per board protocol, I want to remind everyone that we're aiming for four minutes for initial comments for anything described during this meeting, and two minutes for follow-up. Do any board members have any comments? Member Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My question is for the page 10, Slide 10, for the success and YPEP. It's a single-point of entrance. There's two separate schools in that building, so we're doing two separate ones, correct?
There were actually four entrances in that building.
But four, like one is, one side is-
Correct.
YP, okay.
Everything, they're actually, when we went out there, there were three that we estimated. We had to come back and ask for some more funding, because in our field walk, we missed the one entrance, so all the entrances there are covered.
So then they will all come into one and then go their separate ways, or it's going to be still utilized as two separate schools?
I can get with my project manager and get you an answer to that. I physically have not been there to look at it with eyes myself, but I can get you that answer.
Thank you. Just curious.
No worries.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Ms. Morgan.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ms. Morgan. Proceed.
Thank you. Just for the board's identification, now I can't say it. Amanas Sierra.
Amanas Sierra.
Amanas Sierra, thank you. Amanas Sierra, coming in at 56 million. When I got on the board, that's what a middle school cost, and now that's what an elementary school costs. So that just shows you how much has changed in the period of 10 years.
Well, let me make one more comment to that. The 56 million does not include site work. The previous board had approved the, what is now the Lamb's Middle School. That was a combo site, so all of the site work for that entire parcel was done under the build of the new Lamb's School. So although it's 56 million, it would have been more had it been on its own parcel with all of the storm, the fill, the management, the asphalt, the utilities, and so forth. So it looks reasonable, but I can tell you, the numbers have gone through the roof. We're seeing 15 to 30%. It's insanity. So, and we're not alone. So with, with that, Tony Dent McNair, the Assistant Director of Maintenance, I'll get out of the way. She can complete her portion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon. We currently have 43 renovation projects in the maintenance division. They are Benita Springs Middle and Diplomat Middle School. Right now, we are working on the design phase for re-roof there at those schools. We're doing asphalt work, which is basically a seal coat and re-stripe of the parking lot at Cape Coral Technical College. We are in the design phase for restroom modifications at Cypress Lake High School. We are doing generator work, replacing generators at Cypress Lake High School and Astero High School. We are replacing switchgear systems at Cypress Lake High School. Field lighting. Field lighting is for the large LEDs. We're replacing the heads there, 2B LEDs, and we are doing that at Dunbar High School and Astero High School. We also have HVAC upgrades at East Lee High School and Edgewood Elementary, and are doing electrical upgrades at Fort Myers Technical College. We have additional generators going in at G Weaver Hips and Mariner High School, HVAC upgrades at Gateway Elementary, and Hancock Creek Elementary, as well as Island Coast. Re-roof projects are at J. Colen English as well. We're doing flooring upgrades at J. Colen English, chiller upgrades at Lehigh High School, and gutters at Littleton Elementary. We are also replacing generators at Mirror Lakes, Skyline, and North Fort Myers. Switchgear replacements are occurring at North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, Mirror Lakes, and Pine Island Elementary School. We've got flooring upgrades happening at North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts and South Fort Myers High School. We are upgrading the fire sprinkler system at Ramacy Page Elementary School. We are doing additional seal coat and re-stripping of the parking lot at Spring Creek, and we have HVAC upgrades and chiller upgrades at Sunshine Elementary School. Finally, we are also replacing the generator at Sunshine Elementary School. Thank you. Re-roofing at Three Oaks Middle School, again, design phase for that. We are doing traffic improvements at Varsity Lakes Middle School, and we are upgrading the tennis courts asphalt at Villa's Elementary School. We have 17 completed projects since last quarter. Those include flooring upgrades at Buckingham Exceptional, our energy control system at Calusa Elementary, switchgear upgrades at Astero High School. We repaired some drainage issues at Fort Myers High School, blind upgrades at Mariner Middle School, switchgear upgrades at Fort, North Fort Myers Middle Academy of the Arts, as well as at Pine Island Elementary School. We did a canopy replacement at North Fort Myers Middle Academy. We did a canopy replacement at North Fort Myers Middle Academy as well. Upgraded cabinets at Orange River Elementary School, blinds at Royal Palm Elementary School. We also did some window upgrades at San Carlos Park Elementary and Spring Creek, as well as some HVAC fan wall upgrades at South Fort Myers High School. And our final completed projects for this past quarter include the Sanibel School window upgrades. Those are egress windows, so that if they need to be repurposed, provided, of course, the measurements fit with any new site, we can remove and replace those windows if that is decided to be. Gym roof replacements at Three Oaks Middle School. We replaced the transfer switch at Transportation Central, and we did blind upgrades at Villa's Elementary. And with that, that completes our report. With that, I will turn it back over to the superintendent.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have no comments at this time.
Do any board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I've never had an opportunity to speak before, so I just want to say thank you for this, and thank you for, and I know this was a Ms. Gittens thing, we're the funding source, and seeing where that money is coming, which shows the public where that's at, so, and us. So I thank you so much for doing that, Toni.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Can I jump over one seat?
Ms. Juvenelli.
Couple things. First of all, the final payment format that changed, I love it. And I had, I had brought that up yesterday, but I was out a little bit yesterday, but I really appreciate that whole format change. It's just between what the auditor did and how it's just formatted and for the, for public and for, it's simplistic for Melissa, so thank you. Second, I have, I have a question regarding the windows for the Sanibel School. So those were installed prior to the hurricane?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. They did help hold up, there was no damage to them, and as they are egress windows, they will be able to be removed and reallocated to another school if need be.
Awesome. Thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Director Dent McNair. I echo what the superintendent said before. Thank you so much for all you've done in your department. I know it's been some trying times, so thank you. If no other comment, let's move on to the next item, which would be Construction Change Order Report, please.
This report, we report monthly to the board as required by statute. This is a change order report for October 2022. Below, you'll see direct material purchases. And for the new board members, let me briefly explain what direct material purchases are. When we, we get tax savings on all the large equipment and construction materials that we buy. So we'll take a credit change order from the vendor, we will purchase all of the concrete, the steel, the roofing materials, the blockwork, the sheet rock, and we get those tax savings, which comes back to the district to go into the coffers. Typically, on our larger high school jobs, it can be anywhere up to a little bit over a million dollars, 1.2 percent. And that comes back in to fund the machine. So direct material purchases, this month, we did a change order for $985,744.66. The amount in tax savings that came back to the district coffers was $55,872.88. For the second reporting, non-direct material purchases, we had none this month. And for contingency adjustments, we had $92,526.75 in contingency adjustments. For the new board members, the contingency adjustments are something that we put in every GMP and every project. It is a 2% amount, it can vary, it depends on what type of projects we're doing, but typically on the new builds, it's about 2%, which is shared between the construction manager and the owner. The owner has authority, and we are the approvers of those. They cannot just spend that money within the GMP. That money is used for unforeseen conditions. So if we have something that was a first cost we didn't realize in the design, if a principal finds a better need in the front office, add a door here that'll make the flow work a little better that we didn't figure in the design, that money would be used for that purpose, so that we don't have to come back to the board. Any contingency that is not spent is credited back to the district with the associated construction manager's fee, again, to come back into the district coffers. And the supporting sheet for what we spent this work on is the second page. What happened to it? There it is. And you'll see the construction management firm for the direct material purchase, that was for all the roofing materials for Amane Sair. Did I get it right, Dr. McNair?
I'm sorry.
All right. That equated to $985,744.66, and again, with a return to the district in tax savings of $55,872.88. Change orders, there were no change orders to report, whether they be additive change orders, which only the superintendent can execute, or deductive change orders. And in the contingency adjustments, you'll see that we had, for Franklin Parks Elementary, $90,000 change orders. That was for revised civil plans and adding three meter boxes on that site. The utilities that were supposedly named in a certain location were not there, and of course, we have to pay for those utility boxes and meters, so we use our contingency on the project for that. Cape Coral Single Point Entry, we had a $1,300 in architects' field revision in there to better make that final flow in that area of entry. And Envirostruck as well, Cape Coral High School Single Point Entry, another $1,086 to expedite materials on that. So again, in certain instances, if it means we can red-tag something or get it overnight shipped, we have to pay that additional cost, we can use contingency to help forecast that as well. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions on the change order report?
Thank you, Director. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott, for, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Scott, for the explanations of the categories as we've gone through. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any board member comment or questions? Mr. Persons?
I just want to say, as a new board member, I do appreciate your simplicity down, so we can understand this a little bit easier. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. We move next on the agenda to job descriptions, and that will be Mr. Dotting.
I have Dr. Carlin with me today. This is a job description for the Communications Division. It is a new job description. It is for the position of Coordinator of Government, Communications and Government Relations. And the job description is in the board packet, and we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Dotting, and thank you, Dr. Carlin. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
A couple of things I'd like to add, just in preparation for your questions, maybe answer some of them potentially in advance. As some of you will recall who are present on the board, at the time, we combined the Communications Government Relations into a new chief position. There was some discussion both between the board and the community regarding the amount of work regarding both Communications and Government Relations. At that time, we did speak about the possibility of adding another function or another position to the team. That would be a coordinator, potentially an administrator coordinator of Government Relations. This individual would help support the chief of Communications and Government Relations, specifically related to their duties both locally and in Tallahassee. This is just the first attempt to bring a job description forward, describing that person's work. I'm ready and prepared to answer any additional questions you may have regarding this position, and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do any board members have any comments or questions? Ms. Morgan?
So, I, well, I'm a little concerned about the Communications and Government Relations Department, looking at the org chart in addition to the job description. I have no problem with this job description, I just don't think that the organization of the Communications and Government Relations Group is adequate to meet the needs of the district, both in terms of the way it's constructed and in terms of management and administration. So I will be asking when the presentation is done on the strategic plan, that again, this is something we need to workshop before. I would be prepared to move forward with approval of either the org chart or the job description.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Who was next? Mr. Persons?
I can see that there's definitely a need for this position. How it's organized, I'm not privy to what was done in the past, but right now, with our ask with the state after Hurricane Ian, I think it's very important that we have someone possibly embedded up there that could really reach out to all the different legislators in addition to our lobbyist group. The lobbyist group does a good job, but they also lobby for a lot of other people, so they're stretched thin. This would be someone very specific. And also, I think it would be good to have someone locally that is going to all the county commission meetings and council meetings and things, because a lot of times, our needs are not stressed there enough, I think. So I like this position. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I would agree with Mr. Persons that the need is, that there is a need for a local lobbyist and to work with our, as our relationship for our board and the district, because that piece has been missing, it's been a missing piece for a while, is having that relationship building. And, and it's very difficult, even as a board member, we all have our own little piece of it, but it's still, you, you get spread thin, because not only you're going to those, those kind of meetings and so forth, you have schools to go to and plays and football games, and you just get spread really thin. So that being said, I do see the need, and especially after Hurricane Irma, I would completely agree with that, because there's going to be a lot of asks, and we need hands-on someone there, right there at that moment, to capture the attention of who's giving out the money. Let's be real, the legislators are the ones that do that. So that is really a key component, is the relationship building. But as far as the, the actual job description, I had, I have a little bit of a problem with the job description, because it doesn't even say communications degree, is not even mentioned in there at all, and education is first, a master's degree in education. For me, the concern then would be, are we going to take a teacher or someone out of a classroom, out of a school? And with such a shortage in certified personnel and teachers in the classroom, I would not want that to happen. Unfortunately, for teachers, the only way to make more money is to advance and go to something like this. And that's unfortunate, because I think we should be incentivizing the longevity in the classroom, and giving people more money for that, and keeping them there, than rather than having to leave to make more money. So I actually, last night, when we were at the, the awards at the foundation they had at, I was talking to some administrators and so forth, and they don't want to lose people out of the classroom or out of their school. They need to keep them there, and we need to have something that incentivizes them to stay, that they can make more money, where they don't have to leave to be an administrator or come to the district. And that would be one of the things that I think we should be championing and lobbying for, and Tallahassee is encouraging. But I will not, I won't support the job description based on just education alone, because I think it needs to be someone that, and which is not even in there, but in my notes, I've got, we wouldn't want to encourage for people to leave the schools and classroom. And I think that the degree should not be education first. I think it should have maybe a political science, that's not in there, communications, public relations, strategic communications. There's so many other degrees that we can be capturing, and it should be someone from outside the district, someone that has that education and experience, or experience, or both, versus an education degree. I don't think, I'm just really against the, and that was the first thing, was the education thing, and that jumped out at me, because I think that someone with the communications, you know, there's so, you know, political science, there's just so many more degrees that we should be capturing for this job. And so I really frown on the education part of it. I'm not saying I'm against it, but for someone to leave the classroom, to come to make more money and advance, I think we can do better than that with, with a different, a different mindset than just an education, a master's degree in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Ms. Morgan?
And I agree with Ms. Juvenelli. I think, thank you. I didn't catch that. I think one of the mistakes we've been making as a board is not being specific enough in our job descriptions to indicate that we are looking for people with professional credentials in a field that is not necessarily education, but supports education. So I just want to say thank you for that comment, and I support what you had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I didn't read it as, I read it as, you have government, you have related, I believe that this person needs to understand education if they're up there and they are working for us as an, as an educational institute, that's something that they really need to understand our needs. But as far as the other, the qualifications, there definitely is government in there, there's or related fields, which could, of course, be anything, and we could elaborate on that for sure. Three years of experience working with local and/or state government officials on legislative issues, so there's legislative on the preferred qualifications, so there, that's in there. And I know that we do not make the job descriptions, but I don't see, to me, I did not read that as a teacher coming out of a classroom to do this. I read it as a, someone who is accustomed to working with government officials on legislative issues, more of, yeah, like poly-science, or what, you know, which you had mentioned as well, yeah.
Mr. Persons?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Jordan's. I read that totally different. I mean, I think we're, we'd be looking for someone with a lot of political connections. They also must have a love and a desire for education, otherwise, why we want them up there lobbying for us. So you have to blend the two together, and I think that's going to happen. I don't know if it'll be hard or easy to find such a person. You have to see who applies. But someone that maybe had run for office before, or been in office before, might be an ideal candidate. But that's up for y'all to find out for that, but I think the qualifications are okay.
Any other questions from fellow board members at the moment? I would agree with, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mr.
Well, this is up for discussion, but I mean, let's be realistic. We have people on the board like myself that doesn't have any education background, and yet, we're here. So I don't think it takes, you have to have an education background to lobby. I think that you have to have the, it's easy to, you know, you do have, you have the aspiration to learn, and there is a lot to learn, but I think to advocate, you just have to have a clear understanding of what the need is, and that could be anyone, but I think you need to have the political, I think, you go to school to be, a master's degree in education is for, an education person that wants to be a teacher, that wants to be over that. I mean, I think that political science and communications is probably, that, that degree is a little more generic, not defined as education. So I think that, I mean, our, our older lobbyists, they were a lobbyist, yet they, theirs was in healthcare, but I mean, lobbying is, she understood what that was. I don't, I don't think that changed the outcome. I don't, I don't think that changed the outcome. I think everything, she was a lobbyist, and she lobbied, she was able to change that to education as well as healthcare. So, I didn't, I don't see that that being an issue. But I do see when you have a master's degree and someone that was in the classroom and changing to now be a lobbyist, that's, to me, is a different, a different avenue of their path and their education path. I can't imagine someone going to school to be a teacher thinking that they want to be a lobbyist in 10 years from now. I don't, I just don't. So, I think that we do need to be more direct, more explicit in what we want, because the outcome is going to be, I believe, will be better, in my opinion. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. I want to try to move this along a little bit, but my comments on it in regards to this is, politics, anything lobbying, is not going to be limited to something that's a poli-sci degree. For me, I looked at it, and I believe Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persons said this is the experience, that's the biggest thing for me. I couldn't see, the department hopefully would not be hiring anyone that doesn't have significant experience in this, whether it's, you know, involved in another governmental entity, politics, anything in regards to that. I agree, we do have to have a check on that, but perhaps, maybe we could look at, you know, increasing maybe the experience by maybe another additional year or something like that. But being involved in politics myself before this, as I said, people come from all different backgrounds, and it's more your experience in this per se, more important than I'd say your education. So, Ms. Morgan?
So, I just want the board to be aware that the only control we have over this position is the job description. If Human Resources brings forward a candidate that we don't believe fits the bill, and the superintendent makes that recommendation, we do not have the ability to say no. So, the tighter the job description, the closer it comes to our expectations for what we would expect to see in a representative of this district at the state level, the better off we will be in terms of providing HR with the information they need to recruit, and we'll be in a better position with respect to approving the candidate. That's my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Would there be any movement forward on maybe suggesting to see if there'd be three years of minimum experience for the lobbying, or government, making the preferred three years of experience working in local and state government on legislative issues, maybe perhaps looking into making that as a minimum qualification instead of a preferred? Because somebody I could not see coming right out of education having that. I mean, there'd be at least a three-year gap, and I'm sure we'd be looking for something different. What do my fellow board members think about this?
I agree with you, Mr. Fisher. Whenever it comes to, I think, I'll just, when it comes to the qualifications of the master's degree for an accredited institution, maybe something instead of just a related field, maybe we need to be a little more specific in the list of degrees that we would be seeking, rather than a related field, because that could just be, that could be subjective. I do think that's a great point, that as a former educator myself, I would not be able to come right out of the classroom to go into something like this and feel like I was prepared. So, yes, adding in perhaps a minimum of three years, being a lobbyist or something related to this field, I think we need to add that, or if you could add that into the qualifications when you're possibly rewriting this. I did want to just go back to one thing that Mr. Persons said when we first started the conversation, and that not only is this a great idea to have someone here lobbying for what we want for our students, and that's really the bottom line, but obviously, that's not just between us and the state, but somebody locally, you know, that's being able to talk and converse with our commissioners and close the gap on being able to communicate and work together with our local officials, so.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Why don't we see if we can, Dr. Carlin and Director Dunick, why don't we see if we can maybe tighten up a little bit, and maybe board members, we could send Mr. Superintendent, perhaps looking at maybe making, again, the minimum qualification, at least three years, and that might be something acceptable to this board that will appease and hopefully get the person we need to for this.
Mr. Chair?
Does the, how's the board feel about that? Are we good with doing that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, sorry.
Mr. Dunick and Denise will certainly take direction as it's provided to the board to me, and then I will certainly pass it along to the two individuals on the staff. I'm hearing some things pretty clearly, but let me begin with going back to talk a little bit about when we first talked about this position and catch the three newest board members up to speed a little bit. With the time we were making this decision to combine government relations and communications, we spoke very specifically about a position for somebody to be embedded in Tallahassee during the legislative session. But at the same time, we knew this person was going to be very difficult to come by. We knew they were not going to be easily found, because we were looking for a level of experience as a former liaison to a elected government official. In other words, you're looking for somebody who, and I will remind all of you, we held off bringing the job description prior, because we were waiting for the election cycle to end. When people run for office as elected officials, oftentimes their staff will step away from a staff role and move into a campaign role. When that individual wins election, that staffer has a pretty easy decision about returning back to the fold that they are very comfortable with. If that individual loses an election, then staff members have a reason or opportunity, I guess, to consider what they would like to do. If you've, and many of you have, worked very closely around liaisons and staffers of elected officials, they run about 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're available at midnight, 4:00 a.m. I mean, they're, so when they step off a losing election campaign, oftentimes what they're looking for is maybe something that's only five days a week and 24 hours, and additionally, some additional money, and which, or in a place and a community with which to put down roots. I would not elicit this position from a teacher from a classroom. We are looking for a more experienced government, if you will, professional, somebody who, and so I'm hearing the education piece, we can certainly make a revisement there. I think we should do some more research related to related field and be more specific, but I think we always want in a job description, some form of catch-all, because there could be somebody with really amazing experience, that only has an education major. They had a family friend when they graduated from college, they went to work for an assemblyman who became a senator, and then became a member of the U.S. Congress, and then maybe coming off a losing senate campaign at the U.S. level, at the federal level, and now they're looking to return back home. We always want some form of catch-all in a job description. And then lastly, I think it's just important for me to remind the board, since my tenure, I've only tried to bring the very highly best-qualified candidates. There's a reason why there's still an open chief operations officer. We only got down to two candidates that were qualified, and one based upon our insurance program at the time, with a large family, had to turn us down, because financially, he could not make the move. You have already made corrections, well, we'll make corrections later this evening to that. I think the quality of the candidate, when I bring them forward, but to Ms. Morgan's point, she's absolutely correct, this is your chance to control and help me to understand and get the best-qualified candidates. But I will ensure and continue to ensure you that there have been multiple positions that have been brought forward to me, that I have said, no, thank you, we need to re-advertise. Because when I look at these, I do think minimum quals are minimum quals, they're a person who gets to play, but what I'm interested in doing, in the interview process, and when we work with our teams, we are definitely looking for those preferred qualifications. So, let us go back, revise, and work on this, and we'll bring it back to another briefing, so that can be, so that those matters can be addressed. I do want to also just reiterate that while they're embedded in Tallahassee during a legislative session, they would be present here locally outside of session to attend our commission meetings, review all the agendas, and one of the things I would like them to do is provide a weekly update to the board as to what all the local chambers are doing, so that you have an idea as board members, without having to do your own research, you would have those agendas and what our county commission may be considering from their regular business, but highlighting specifically any educational issues they might be addressing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Why don't we move along on this item? Can we make these comments quick, please?
Yes. My comment is this, remember, we're going to have an elected superintendent. I in no way wanted to suggest that Dr. Burnier wouldn't bring forward a highly qualified candidate. It's not about Dr. Burnier. It's about the future and our ability to set an appropriate foundation. Thank you.
Great point. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. As I said, we can send some of our, any issues we have to the superintendent, let him proceed as he previously mentioned. So, thank you, thank you, Director Dunick, thank you, Dr. Carlin. Let's move on to item four, District Communication Engagement Team. That will be presented by Dr. Carlin and, I believe, Director Lancaster.
Mr. Fish? May I show you my camera?
Sorry about that. Let me repeat that. Let's move on to item number four, District Communication Engagement Team, and that will be led by Dr. Carlin and Director Lancaster.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Burnier and Mrs. Dupree Bruno. It's our pleasure to be here with you today to share information about the Communications and Engagement Strategic Plan. With me today are Irma Lancaster, our Director of Strategic Communications, and to her right, Rob Spicker, our Assistant Director for Communications. So, our agenda today is full, so we're going to go ahead and dive right in. We are going to start with, however, since we have a few new seated board members, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood who the members of our team are. So, we do have some team members in the audience, I am going to recognize them shortly, as well as some folks in the back that make this production possible here and broadcast that. So, do you want to take a moment to do that as well? Irma's going to dive into the strategic plan, our goals, objectives, and our strategies, as well as our measures. We're going to highlight something you may or may not know about, which is our Student Journalism Internship Program, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Burnier for his comments and your discussion. So, having said that, like I said, we do have some team members here today. In front of you, you have our organizational chart for Communications and Engagement, and I would like to just take a moment, like I said, to acquaint you to the team members that comprise the small but mighty team, who's dedicated to making sure that our community is aware and communicated with about the various initiatives of our school district. So, to my right, like I said, is Irma Lancaster. She is a two-time Emmy Award winner with more than two decades of experience in communications, including journalism, media, advertising, marketing, and public, government, and community relations. She's originally from California, she's been with our district in this role for three years now. To her right is Assistant Director Rob Spicker, and Rob has been with our district for five years. He brings 27 years of broadcast news experience. He serves on the boards, as the board's Vice President of the Animal Refuge Center in North Fort Myers. He and his wife have two children that have graduated from our school district, and their third is currently in high school. In our audience today, I'm going to ask for just to wave Jennifer Robinson. Jen was appointed to this role just a couple of weeks ago. She's been with the district for 15 years and has actively led efforts for internal and external engagement. So, welcome to our team. Laura Howard, if you'll just wave. Laura has been with our district and in our Communications Department for 16 years. She was the recipient of a Sunshine Medallion Award for her work in helping our district to become one of the first school districts in Florida to have a mobile website. Also, Gigi Richard. Even though Gigi studied criminal justice in business in college, she fell in love with media when she was asked to work on a communications research project with E.W. Scripps as part of her MBA program. As you know, Gigi is our manager for Public Relations, and she has worked both in media and, and Public Records, excuse me, she is our manager of Public Records. She's worked both in media and with Public Records ever since she's been involved in this work. And to her right is our powerful secretary in the department, her name is Annette Puckett, and Annette has been with our district for 28 years, so she brings a wealth of experience. This is her first full year in communications, and prior to that, she served in a variety of roles, both at the school level and the district level. She's also a proud veteran of the United States Army, so we're very proud to have her on our team. So, those are the team members you can see here today in the back, like we said, in our control room, assisting with the production of this very board briefing, are a few folks that are pictured up on the screen. We're going to start with Adam Wright. Adam is our Coordinator of Multimedia Communications. He has been with our district for four years. He oversees the multimedia staff and the Student Journalism Intern Program, which we'll highlight toward the end of our presentation. Adam has 10 years of experience in multimedia communications, and he won the district's first Emmy Award for one of his videos in 2018. Also, we have three multimedia specialists. You may recognize up there Dave Alexander, who's been with our district for nine years. He has 46 years of experience in both radio and television broadcasting. Dave just started his 15th year as the voice of the Florida Everblades, and he serves as a spokesperson for the German Shepherd Rescue Groups of Florida. Also, up there is Grace Edmonds. Grace was an intern in communications for two years before we hired her in April. As an intern at just 17 years old, Grace won her first Emmy Award in the Multimedia Journalists Division. After hours in her spare time, she is also a college student pursuing a degree in communications and multimedia production, so she's a very busy lady. And also, Adam Heyjost, he is one of our newest team members. He's been with the district for two months. Adam has four years of professional experience in communications, having served as a news producer for a station in Oregon and also right here in Florida. And last but not least, our two wonderful ladies who worked at the switchboard, that's Laronna Poole, who has been with communications for two years, she has previously worked in transportation, and Zaimara Galindas, who's been with our district for 20 years. Zaimar has worked both in the schools and at the district office in a variety of roles, and most importantly, in communications. So, we're glad to have her on the team as well. As you can see, I'm very honored to work with this exceptional team, who works tirelessly each and every day to share our district's story and to engage our community in support of our district's vision, mission, and goals. So, as you can see on the screen, these are some of the awards that have been earned by the team, and trust me, in the few short months that I've worked with them, these are well-deserved recognitions. They worked very tirelessly, like I said, and especially post-hurricane and during the hurricane, as we worked to maintain communications with our community. So, as we dive into the strategic plan, I always think it's important to talk about our vision and our mission. And this department, our proud of how we support the district's vision to be a world-class school system, and the district's mission to ensure that each student reaches their highest personal potential. And you can see underneath how we have delineated how the work of our team supports both the vision and the mission of our district. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Irma Lancaster, who's going to talk with you about the strategic plan goals and objectives.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, as we create and share communications, it's important to keep our key stakeholders in mind. We have placed them into three categories, internal, extended internal, and external. In the agenda item in Board docs, we attach the comprehensive communications and engagement plan. We're always evaluating the content and making updates as needed. In this presentation, we'll provide you with a brief, high-level overview of some of our goals and objectives, and some examples of strategies and tactics we use and continue to use to meet these goals. You'll see that our goal supports the district's strategic plan of student success by doing work in areas of family and community engagement, workforce success, and continuous improvement. Our goal number one is community outreach, to cultivate and strengthen communication and engagement with students, families, and the community at large, to include them in the district's mission and vision. And some of the, one of the objectives, measurable objectives that we have to meet this goal is by June 30th, 2023, at least 80% of parents will agree or strongly agree that information is accessible, as evidenced by the communications satisfaction survey responses. Some of the many strategies and tactics we'll use to work towards this goal is to organize community engagement opportunities to inform the public about district initiatives and programs, build and execute a proactive 12-month media relations plan, and develop and maintain a target list of new partners and community leaders and events for engagement.
So, to support our goal of community outreach and engagement, our office is using a variety of communication and engagement tools. We're supporting the district and our schools in both their communications and their public relations efforts. So, this could be everything from drafting speeches, to crisis messaging that our schools might need, event promotions, even social media support. The goal of our public The goal of our public relations effort is to create the best positive image of the district and our schools as possible. The marketing and advertising we're involved in helps us to create awareness of some of the services that we offer. Our office is helping various departments promote their programs, maybe their employment opportunities, and we're also buying at times commercial time on radio and television. Nearly every day, brings at least one media inquiry into our office, probably more than one. So, Media Relations manages those requests. We're providing information, we're providing statements, and we're setting up interviews if those are requested and appropriate. And it works the other way around as well, where we are actively pitching stories to media, things that we want them to cover, highlighting our students, our staff, our schools, and getting a way to have them come cover the stories we wish about our amazing staff and students. And we are also able to create events for them, like the groundbreaking ceremonies at our schools and things like that for them to cover. The multimedia services that we offer include informational or training videos for employees and our families. We might create flyers or invitations, programs, graphics, even audiovisual support at the board meeting, like you heard today, and we could do this at other district or school events as well.
Some other examples of how we support this goal is our community engagement work. Our team makes routine contact with community groups and individuals regarding important school district information. Local chambers, civic groups, and rotaries are contacted for project-specific presentations throughout the school year. Recent topics presented include the projects funded by the halfpenny sales tax, health and safety protocols, and the proximity student assignment plan. We also have increased our efforts in reaching out to our most densely populated and underserved communities via our Community Canvas Project, Parent University, literacy partnerships, and community town halls.
So, we did recently survey our families to at least get some baseline information about their, our communication efforts and how they're received. We're soon going to be asking them that direct question if they believe the information we're providing is easily accessible to them. But what we wanted to show is what we have learned about our communication efforts and how they're received. So, the top three ways that our families prefer to get information from the district are going to be via text, email, and a phone call. So, that's the blue percentage on the, on that chart there, how, where their percentage is. We use a system, if you're not familiar, that's called School Messenger, and it does allow us to sell, send out one, two, or three of those messages. We can send a phone call and a text, an email and a phone call, any combination or one single message. We consistently urge our families to sign up for this service, as we know it's going to be the quickest and the most direct way for us to reach them, and now we recognize as well that it is the most used way that they're getting information. When we're sending out a text, 84% of our families are receiving them, so that's the orange block there, the percentage that are receiving those messages and taking them in, fits right in line with their preferred method. While they may not be as preferred, our parents are receiving their emails and the phone calls that we send, sometimes going to voicemail, so we know that that information is getting to them. Our texts, they're read by 95% of the, of the parents who receive them. That's the gray stack on that column. And what we'll often do in our texts, while they're limited by the number of characters, is try to provide a direct link. So, if we're asking them to go somewhere for more information, the link is there to take them to that webpage. We're not saying, trying to avoid, "Read your email because there's something in there." It's, "Here's what we're doing. Click the link." We did that with many of the superintendent's videos during the hurricane. Those updates weren't, "Go to your video, go to your email to watch the video," they were, "Superintendent's created a message. Here's the video link." So, we want to make it easy for them so that they have it right there. And while our emails aren't opened as much, the phone calls, though, we know are listened to by nearly three-quarters of our parents. So, those communication methods are reaching the families that we want, and we encourage any family that does not have a School Messenger account to, to sign up for one so that we can get you that information.
Here's some other examples of how we track success in our community engagement. We use analytics of our online tools, such as our website and social media. As you can see, our website visitors have remained pretty consistent throughout the last three years at over 1 million per year. And there's also consistency in the most visited topics. As you can see, career opportunities, student enrollment, and student grades and assignments within the Focus Parent Portal are the top three topics for all three years. Well, looking at our social media coverage, you can see that there has been a significant increase in engagement on all three of our platforms. Unfortunately, Twitter did, had different analytics in 2020 and 2021, so we do not have that information to compare, but we have seen a significant increase in engagement in that platform as well.
And another thing we're doing is tracking what local news outlets, the stories that they're posting online about the school district. This is a standard public relations practice. We want to know what's being said about us, how it's being said, and by who. And the data also helps us target specific pitches for a story to an outlet that we think is going to provide the most favorable coverage to that pitch or be most likely to pick it up. We categorize these stories as they are posted by as either being positive, negative, or neutral. A positive story is going to put the district in a good light, highlight our accomplishments in some way, clearly get out a message or the information that we want. A negative story, just like it sounds, is going to portray us or look upon us poorly. And neutral stories often take no position or might just simply mention the school district. Could be about a student who's doing something out of school, but mentions that they go to a certain school. There are the main outlets locally that are listed there for you that have been providing the coverage. January 1st through October 31st is the data that is on this chart for you. So, The Breeze Communications, which is six community-oriented newspapers, including Cape Coral Daily Breeze, Lehigh Acre Citizen, the North Fort Myers Neighbor, that has done the most coverage of the school district so far this year, totaling, what, well over 500 stories at this point in the year. Obviously, that's in part because they're publishing across multiple platforms, but those are targeted toward those communities, so not everybody is, like myself, looking in the morning, reading the North Fort Myers Neighbor, the Lehigh Acre Citizen, and the Cape Coral Breeze. They're reading one, maybe two. They also, at The Breeze, published the most amount of positive stories about us. 16% of this year's total stories from them are, are in the positive category. You see, the News Press is the next most likely outlet to cover us, but 61% of the stories that they are covering are about our high school athletics. They are aggressively covering, you know, this fall football, and soon they'll be leading into basketball, volleyball. They do a lot of our sports coverage. They have the TV stations, which are kind of in the same category in terms of their total coverage, but up, ramping up a little bit as you work through the group. And at the end is WGCU. WGCU brought in some new management in May and kind of changed their focus to go back to more local reporting, so they picked up the number of stories that they have done about us, which is 24 so far between January and October. Just to make some quick comparisons, to 2021, last year, it was the News Press that provided us the most coverage. It was 502 stories, so not even as many as, as the Daily Breeze has provided this year. The Breeze was much lower, was well into the 400s, but again, they were the most positive coverage. That's been a trend that I've seen over the last few years, that The Breeze Communications gives us the most positive coverage. The TV stations, they're all trending lower in 2021 than you see on the chart there, but I would think that's in large part is because of COVID. Remained a story throughout the entire school year, particularly in the fall. Our big event this year was Hurricane, that got, garnered a lot of immediate attention. That was kind of a one-month thing. Total audience reach is kind of spectacular when you think about this. The number of people that have been exposed to stories about the school district of Lee County for this year, including November, is 1.3 billion people. That's pretty spectacular amount of people, outpacing the 1.2 billion that were reached or exposed to stories about the school district of Lee County in 2021. Our biggest month this year was October. We had 314 million people reached, primarily about Hurricane Ian. Spanish media outlets are on there as well. Spanish media is something in particular that, that we have been targeting, but the way they post online is very different, and that's why those numbers are so different. They do not regularly, every day, update or have a website, or some of their websites have gone up and gone down where they're active and they're not. It hasn't been as consistent. But there's two main outlets, Noticius Wink and Telemundo. 2022, January through October, again, you can see we have been able to get more stories placed online, more coverage by those two outlets than we had, had the previous year. And for Telemundo, it's doubled. And Irma is making regular appearances on Acción Hispania. Am I saying that right?
Perfect.
Perfect, which is a Univision news source that has Facebook updates. We do reach out frequently to the reporters of these Spanish outlets, in particular knowing that our Spanish-speaking parents are an audience that we need to reach, so we're trying to reach to them directly when we have an initiative that we want covered on the Spanish media. And whenever they make a request that we know it's a program that's important to us, we do everything we can to provide them with a Spanish speaker, or at least make them available and, and interview in English so that they can translate it on their program. And one more thing, it's not on the charts, but adds to the coverage from this year because it aired in November, but Telemundo was here and did a five-part series related to Hurricane Ian. It was called "Stronger Than Ian: How Florida Districts Supported Each Other to Reopen the Schools After Hurricane Ian." Their reporter spent Friday through at least Monday, I think into Tuesday, in Lee County, visiting our schools, spoke to a bus driver in transportation, families and neighborhoods, and then again, that five-part special report aired in November, so increasing our Telemundo numbers for the year.
So, as Dr. Carlin mentioned, we have two switchboard operators. So, to give you an idea of the work that they have to do daily, since the beginning of 2022, we have answered 362,000 phone calls. That is just up until the end of October. The top three topics that are inquired about are student enrollment, careers and jobs, and payroll. So, that number gives you an idea of why they couldn't be here today, because they're answering 300,000 phone calls every day. Well, not every day, but...
Enough.
Sometimes it feels like it. So, goal number one is our most comprehensive. Our goal number two is employee engagement. We want to improve communication and engagement from the district to all staff. One measurable objective to achieve this is as follows: By June 30th, 2023, at least 80% of district employees will agree or strongly agree that employee information is accessible as measured by the Communication Satisfaction Survey. Some strategies and tactics to achieve this are: Providing consistent and timely internal communications regarding initiatives and policy changes in the district; Re-engaging and expanding our employee advisory committees; And continuing to promote and support the recognition of employees through awards and events.
So, some of those awards and events that we're help, involved with and supporting, we promote things like Teacher of the Year, Support Staff of the Year, getting the photos that those employees need for their state applications, and the videos. Videos are sometimes required as well for their entrance application, so we're providing that kind of service for them. Maybe you saw just today was School Related Employee of the Year. A week ago was the Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year along to get videos and pictures online and on our website. We have the Student Film Festival, and that gives many of our students, who are video creators, an almost Academy Award-like experience recognizing the top video creations throughout the school year. We're giving technical support to the Sheriff's Office for their Do the Right Thing Awards that take place right here in this very room. Those are honoring students who've made good choices, and we know from principals that those students that are honored, they do see improvement in both grades and behavior. We're supporting the science, the Inventors Fair with promotions or technical help in any videos they might need. We do the same for the ceremonies that recognize employees or students and staff when they are recognized by the board. Here in some of those meetings, we have a page on our website specifically created for photos from the students and the staff that are recognized by you when they receive their board recognition. And because of the sales tax, we've also been able to plan, prepare, and execute the groundbreaking and the ribbon-cutting at our new schools. We'll have more of those coming up, and create media events that highlight the various stages of construction at these large projects. We did also put out a questionnaire, a survey, to check on our, whether or not we're meeting the goal. This was done just last month, and whether or not they felt information provided to them from the Communications Department was readily accessible and easily available. Our employees told us that 68% did agree with that statement, with a goal of 80%. We knew need to continue to work and to bring more of those into the fold to agree or strongly agree that that information is easily accessible to them.
Our goal number three is internal organization, to revise and create procedures, processes, and staffing mechanisms to optimize internal and external communications and engagement. Our measurable objective is by June 30th, 2023, at least 80% of department heads will involve communications in major district initiative campaigns, as measured by central leadership survey responses. Some of the strategies and tactics we'll use to work towards this objective is to continue to work with departments and schools to improve communication support of schools and programs, and provide presentations to principals throughout the year on how to effectively communicate their school programs and good news stories.
So, we asked our department heads if we were reaching our 80% goal of involving the communications in the major district initiatives, and 54% responded to us that they are always or usually doing just that. So, we're going to continue to ensure that the department heads know the communications team is here and available to them to support them and help them streamline their communications process internally and externally for any major initiatives that they are developing.
So, we wanted to share with you an example of a communications campaign. What exactly does that mean? This is what we did for Peanut Butter Reintegration rollout that happened in February. It had been several years since we had peanut butter in our cafeterias, and, you know, due to multiple reasons, we needed to reintegrate that. So, we put together a communications plan, and it looks very similar. All our plans look very similar. They include a timeline, they include responsibilities, and apparently I can't open it, but it's, it's very thorough and extensive. And it consists of, you know, who's going to do what, what is the anticipated deadline for the communications, and how are we going to get the information out to the different stakeholder groups? We also wanted to take a moment, as Dr. Carlin mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, to highlight our Multimedia Journalism Student Internship Program. This provides our students with hands-on television journalism experience. Some of the things they learn are script writing, interviewing, videography, editing, graphics, and TV production. Many of our interns have gone on to the university. Many have obtained jobs in professional journalism and broadcasting. One of them, like Dr. Carlin mentioned, won an Emmy Award, and we snagged her up as soon as we could, and now she is a full-time employee. That work is overseen by our department, specifically by Adam Wright, but our team entirely works to support them and train them in journalism, and then they go on to help us tell our story. We want to invite you to connect with the district and also share with your connections how to obtain information about the district via our online channels, our website, our email, and all our social media outlets. Now, this presentation gives you a brief overview of our team, what we do, and some of the ways we communicate internally and externally. We're here to support our students, staff, and administrators and board members in communicating the district message, but communicating the district's stories, everyone's responsibility, and we are here to help. I want to thank you for your time and attention. I want to thank the team for being here, Rob for helping us, Dr. Carlin and I, with the presentation, and all the team that's behind the scenes, answering the phones, and making sure that we're up and running on this team, on this meeting. So, now I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Carlin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lancaster. At this point, we'll go ahead and turn it over to our superintendent for his comments and the board discussion.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other comments other than to thank the communications team for the work that they've been doing related to this. As a superintendent, deeply indebted to them for some amazing hours that many of them kept. I know Adam is not currently in the room, but I know he's back at the switchboard. Can't tell you how many countless hours Adam spent with me putting videos together, helping to craft scripts and other things, and then taking what is a very boring superintendent and making him very poignant by the pictures and the video clips that they embedded into those video opportunities, because that's what makes it watchable. And I really appreciate Adam, the team that's here in front of you for their help and support through the hurricane. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Jordan?
Well, I just love this. The first time I seen it, it was just, I love the fact that, you know, you do make sure that you tell our story and make sure that we get out there first and that we control the narrative, and I just really appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
If nobody else is going to speak, I'm going to open my mouth. Nobody else is interested? Okay. I can never see. Okay. I have a couple of questions and, and some comments. First of all, I would agree with what Ms. Jordan said. I think you guys are turning out, you guys are turning out a fabulous product. I am really impressed by the internship work that's been done. I'm impressed by the quality and the content, fact-filled, heartfelt, great storytellers. So, I, I want you to understand that I really respect the work you're doing. I'm impressed by the work you're doing, but I do have some questions about what is happening strategically. First of all, my question of the superintendent, and he doesn't have to answer this now, but I still don't understand why public records is part of communications. To me, you're asking people who are not trained in legal matters to instruct members of the public on the law with respect to public communications. I believe it belongs in the legal department, so I'm just throwing it out there. Essentially, what I, and this may be my fault as a, as an old, old board member, encouraging... may be my fault as an old, old board member, encouraging you guys to come forward with your strategic plan or your strategy, so to speak, because essentially, you all haven't had the opportunity to, what's the word, to re- re-engage in the whole strategic planning process for communications since COVID, which has changed the whole world of communications. And, you know, my question would be, you're doing a lot of work, you're doing high-quality work, you say you're reaching your audience, but my question is, have you had focus groups with each of your stakeholder groups to ask the question, who do you want to hear from? What do you want to hear about? Where do you want to hear it? Why do you want to hear it? And how do you want to hear it? And I just feel like what I'm hearing is a presentation of what we learned when we developed the strategic plan about four or five years ago. It's been embellished, but it hasn't been enriched by re-engaging the stakeholders to ask the critical questions, so that when we go out and say, are you paying attention? We know that they're paying attention because they open their, they open their text. The fact that they open their text doesn't tell you that the text is meaningful to them and that the link works, you know. So that's, that's my frustration right now. I think we should have started rather with a briefing, with a workshop, because I think we would have, it would have been much easier for someone like me to articulate what it is that I'm looking for as a board member. So those are my comments. Thank you. Oh, it would also help, would also help if you said the percentage of respondents who responded. You know, I don't, you know, a survey is only as valid as, you know, the number of people who were reached out to and participated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
It was more than 5,500 that responded.
Of how many?
Well, we have 90,000 students.
Okay.
Or 97,000 students, so 5,000 parents, 5,600 parents responded to those survey questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
May add to that to answer your question. So we have not conducted focus groups, and we, that is something that we're talking about. However, the survey that we put out did actually have those exact questions. What information do you want to hear? How do you want to receive it? What do you care about? What do you not care about? And I recall transportation being one of those top items, opportunities to be engaged at the school level. So we actually did ask those specific questions, and we would be happy to share those survey results and questions with the board.
Yeah, probably would have been better to do that all in a workshop. So, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Just to the point that as we think about the spring, and we think about the potential of this board working with Dr. Savage, once we can find somebody to work with us, we had in our pre-organizational meeting some discussion, and also here at the dais, about a refresh of the strategic plan. We now have new reading, mathematics, science baselines. We're about to get a new graduation baseline based upon post-pandemic, and we're thinking about that. Communications has a role within that strategic plan. So there will be, there could be, I guess there could be, there could be an opportunity for communications to be brought into our strategic plan as well, because certainly, helping to support families regarding their child's education, the opportunities that they have telling that story will be a critical component, and proactively getting out to our community to help inform them as to what's transpiring, what they need to be aware of as the state continues to develop new tests, new exams, new measures, but also help us tell the story of the successfulness of our strategic plan and how we're moving children closer to our vision and mission. So I think there's an opportunity here for some of what Ms. Morgan was suggesting.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you so much for this. Actually, I would completely agree with what was being said here, especially Ms. Morgan and Dr. Bernier, but this is a start, and this is a great start. And I'm excited to see how this can go. There's been a lot of changes in the Communications Department, and they're, just through, from the pandemic to today, right? So, I mean, we Zoom now for meetings, and we never had that prior to the pandemic. So there's just so much that the communications piece of it is huge, and you do play a huge part and should be to the strategic plan, and I look forward to seeing how that will evolve. I attend a Realtor Conference every year, and one of the things that, that came out of it for me, which I thought was, they asked us, what was the most popular social media? And I thought it was going to be Facebook, or it was YouTube. They said YouTube is the growing, that, and I'm like, oh, I need to YouTube more. I must be missing that. So, you know, when you think something, it's probably, the reality is different sometimes, and because things change, and it's moving. Technology, everything moves just that fast that we, communications will be a big part of our community engagement, which is a huge piece of our plan. So I think that, I look forward to seeing what communications is going to do in our plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Mr. Persons?
Again, as a new board member, I found all the information very easy, very well organized. I don't know what it was in the past, so I appreciate it, and I'm sure as we get into it, we'll be asking for more, like everybody else. But good job. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to the communications team. I can also tell you, as a parent of three kids in this district, I definitely do receive a lot of communication, so I do appreciate that on multiple levels. So I'll tell you that you are successful in that part, so, and, and I appreciate this presentation, all you've done, and, you know, thank you for the welcome, and I appreciate the communications and engagement team. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is item five, the Coach Aaron Feis Guardian Program. That will be by Chief, sorry, Director Newland, sorry, it's an old habit. Welcome, Director.
Good afternoon.
Chief, could you just check your mic?
Sorry, is that better? There you go. Much better. Again, good afternoon, board members, School Superintendent, Dr. Bernier, our Board Attorney, Kathy Bruno. Again, for the record, my name is Dave Newland, Executive Director, Safety, Security, and Emergency Management. Today's meeting is to discuss the Guardian Program. I'm going to talk about the background of the program, the funding source, what other districts do as far as how they implement that program towards their district, and about the components of the program itself. So the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act was created to make Florida schools safer and keep firearms out of the hands of mentally ill and dangerous individuals. This stemmed from the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School incident in Parkland, Florida on February 14th of 2018. This is where a gunman shot several staff members, including 14 students. Coach Aaron Feis Guardian Program was named for the coach who was killed trying to stop the gunman at that school. To supplement law enforcement, it allows guardians and armed personnel on campus for the sole purpose to take down the act of threat. These could be either school employees who volunteer for additional role, or hired personnel. Do you have a little bit of background on the Guardian Program? The Guardian Program, you must pass a psychological and drug screening process, and you must complete at least a minimum of 144 hours of training. So what does that mean? So out of that 144 hours of training, 12 hours is diversity training, and 132 hours is firearm safety and proficiency training. These are the minimum requirements that are required for this position. This could be, the Sheriff's Office may, based on their program, they may require this above the minimum requirement. This is the minimum requirement you must at least pass. Each person that participates as a guardian must complete the program as an 85% pass rate of the firearm proficiency training as part of that program itself. The Sheriff's Office would maintain those documents of any weapons, equipment carried, all training documents, certifications, inspections, and the qualification records of each guardian that would be part of that program. Each guardian also would be required to complete and qualify annually after the initial training as well. Part of the statute you'll see up here is, there's a requirement that there's some, some presence at a school, whether it be a school resource officer, a school safety officer. They changed, they added 19, added as a security guard, could also be considered that person at that school, and of course, as today, as we're talking about today, the topic as a guardian itself as well. There's two Senate bills that are related to the Aaron Feis Guardian Program. The first one, which is 7026, basically says that a guardian does not have the same authority or power as a law enforcement officer. Their sole purpose is to stop the act of assailant. That's it. Bill 7030 basically talks about that once a program is implemented or agreed upon or voted on by a board, that program would be implemented through the Sheriff's Office in that county to establish a program, to provide training. Those guardians based on the program that's been designed, or it could also go to another sheriff's office as well, depending on the situation, for that same guardian program. Guardians can either be a school district employee who volunteered to serve as a school guardian in addition to his or her official duties. A guardian can also be an employee of a school district or a charter school who is hired for that specific purpose to serve as a school guardian. For funding, the fund, the state of Florida provides a safe school allocation that we currently use for the school resource officer program. That, that funding leaves no additional funds towards the Guardian Program. The school district of Lee County supplements the annual cost of the SRO program, in excess of $1 million annually above what is supplied from the state. The guardian grant funding, which is a grant that the Sheriff's Office would apply for, for this program, would cover all the costs as far as, when it comes down to instructor training fees, weapons, range fees, uniforms. There is a one-time $500 stipend that is given to each guardian as well that participate in this program. Anything as far as equipment, that would include any type of portable radios, any type of administrative cost, training. All that is covered through the grant that the sheriff would apply for. You'll see in the bottom of the habit, salaries are not covered by grant. That is for employees that are hired outside the district for that specific purpose of being a guardian. That would not, does not apply to a current employee right now that would have volunteered to be a guardian. They're not applied towards that. It's only for if you hire outside. So make sure that's clear. The Guardian Program, this is, this is coming from a commission meeting that was back in 2021. Also, let me also indicate that I've also reached out to over 30 different school districts itself that currently utilize the Guardian Program to find out how they use the program, how is it applied. I asked various questions. I sent out to every agency to get a response. The state tracks, obviously, what districts have a Guardian Program. They don't ask how they apply it specifically in detail, how that program is implemented for that district. I can tell you from this that over, there's over 46 districts that have a Guardian Program in some capacity. You will see that there's, with no Guardian Program, there's 23. So basically, what that means is there's 67 counties, but there's two additional in here because of the additional school districts. That's why you have 69 here showing, even though there's only 67 counties. Some districts will use a Guardian Program to supplement the SRO Program, which is 20, and some only have the Guardian Program only, which is 26. Those are, there are districts that only have no other responsibility but the Guardian itself, which is at 22. Again, I will tell you that from speaking to these agencies that I reached out to, they all apply the Guardian Program. They're all different based on their needs, based on their area, based on how many schools they have. They all have a different methodology of how they're applied. As I mentioned here before, other districts have applied the Guardian Program for different reasons. Some may be that they, the staffing for law enforcement in that area unable to properly staff their schools. They don't have the manpower, so they've had, some, some areas, they may put, for example, guardians in only the elementary only, and keep SROs in the middle and high school. Some have it where they're, they're covering both. They're all applied different, different ways based on their needs. It's all depends on that, could depend on the fact that what they are currently paying for the SRO Program based on that area. Some pay full 100% cost for the school resource officers in that, that area that they are actually working in. So it depends on that as well. So the key elements that we want to talk about as far as the Guardian Program, what that, what that means, so things that, you know, again, you look at the Guardian Program to determine staffing needs, we can look at either existing employees, whether they're being instructional, non-instructional, and/or as a new position where you'd hire somebody from the outside to create a job description and bring that person down based on, let's say, market rate. Ongoing training would be a consideration as part of the Guardian Program. The sheriff can decide that program that meets their needs beyond the initial requirement, as I mentioned before, which is 144 hours. That's only a minimum requirement. The sheriff can decide that program. It would be, that's again, initial, but you have long term. You have ongoing training. It could be quarterly, it could be monthly. Really depends on that program, what they, that person would be committing to. There's a psychological and drug screening requirements. Again, if an employee was to apply for the program, they'd have to go through that process as well, part of the background process to be a guardian. Liability insurance, legal coverage for negligence, things to think about that could be a possible cost issue. The liability insurance can be covered under the, the grant. It can be carried by the Sheriff's Office, but it depends on the Sheriff's Office. It doesn't have to be. But there is a cost, that liability insurance for that Guardian Program. And then again, and again, also legal coverage, if you have a accidental discharge, you have some negligence that may happen, there's also the legal coverage and cost for that as well. Other key elements, mandated protocol for carry of firearms. What that means is, we have to decide as a Guardian Program, how would the firearms be, or part of the Sheriff's Program, how the firearms be carried, what type of firearm, what type of holster, would be in a certain location on that person, for all things that we have to think about. Other considerations I mentioned before is any type of financial impact based on the model that we decide to put together. Union engagement, any discussions possibly with union that may affect with current employees. Also, state of Florida retirement, a special risk class. So those that are current employees that decide to be a guardian, do they now fall under the special risk class for Florida retirement? And how does that affect the organization? And the last thing I would say is uniforms. We have to decide, do you want that person or persons to wear a uniform, any type of identifier, or nothing at all? Again, as I mentioned before, if you look around at all the districts, they're, they're all over the place. There's no exact way of doing it. It seems like they all do it based on what their needs are, what fits that particular
Now, is there comments for the superintendent?
Thank you, Chief. Board members, just as a, as a lead in to your discussion, first and foremost, I want to be careful regarding specific questions in specific counties. While David has done, while Chief Newland has done a great amount of research, we need to be careful, because Guardian Programs are shaded programs. We need to make sure that in a sense, we are not outing any district's security protocols surrounding their particular plans and programs. So while David, while Chief Newland can answer those questions, he will probably and should resist aligning any answers to any specific district. I just want us to be aware of that. I think slide five is a critical component to the discussion. Slide five is that or slide that drives whether a school district was going to work of the district or charter school employee or personnel that's already employed, and this is an addition. And then the other one- And then the other one is to move to a different level and hire people specifically for that, which takes me to the last slide that Chief Newlin had up, and that is key elements. When you talk about additional considerations, the financial impact based upon the model, he's speaking to that or choice. He's also talking about union engagement. Clearly, if we are going to bring support professionals and teachers into this process, there would at least need to be a conversation with their unions. A state of Florida retirement, again, that speaks more towards the hiring of someone specifically into a paid role where they would have that potential for additional retirement. And clearly, uniforms is part of that process for that or choice for additional people who would be brought into a new employment. So this is our first foray with me as a superintendent in this county to bring this topic forward. It is simply a process to better understand where we are as a board right now, and then to listen to your conversation and discussion so that I might get some direction and preparation for potentially bringing this back before you for a vote. Any type of development of this program, once the board would approve, would move, because it is a site security issue, it would move into shaded sessions. So I do want you to be aware of that. And finally, the last thing I have, and I've cleared this with attorney Bruno, we have, one board member could not be present. I know they communicated not outside the sunshine, just simply letting you know that they could not be at the meeting today. I've cleared with Kathy that it would be appropriate at such time as the chair would recognize me, I would enter those particular questions into the record so that that individual would have the opportunity to participate and get the answers to her questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Director Newlin. Do we have any board comments or questions? Mr. Persons?
On your research with the 46 counties that have the guardian program in some form or another, have there been any instances that were negative? I have not been able to find any in any media, but you would have a little more insight than I would.
I haven't, I can't say I've heard anything negative, no. I wouldn't say nothing negative. All, basically, the conversation's really just been on how they've applied that program to their district based on their needs. That was nothing, I haven't heard nothing negative, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Any other board comments, questions? Ms. Morgan?
I think that if we, we need to understand that if we move ahead on the guardian, and I realize we can't talk about how we would operate it in our school district, I think that we have to make very certain that we understand where staff and families are on the guardian program. For example, families may choose not to send their children to our schools if we have guardians who are not visible in the sense that there's somebody who's unidentified carrying a gun in the school, and the parent doesn't know who it is. Staff members may choose not to teach in a school that has a guardian if the guardian is not disclosed and there is an unnamed individual who is armed in the school. So, you know, I'm just saying that I think we have to have, as we move forward with this, I think we have to have extensive engagement with families and staff about what would be tolerable, acceptable, what is expected of the school district with respect to a guardian program. And all of that would have to be written into policy. So those are my observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Jordan?
Based on the Senate bill 7030, we already meet the criteria of what is needed to adhere to that bill with our safe school officers, with our MOUs, with the sheriff's department and the other cities. So we are already meeting those criterias that is needed for that. And what I'm looking at, and we have a great relationship, and unfortunately or fortunately, you know, with the hoax that just took place, we know, we've had the opportunity to see how that works, having them in our district and working with the law enforcement and the response time that they had. Because we just did a, at the FSBA, I attended the SRO forum that they had, and they were speaking about how it was two minutes and five minutes. That's our time when if something were, God forbid, were to happen. The guardians do not have the, they have totally different, they cannot do what our sheriffs or our Fort Myers PD or KPD, what they are able to do, they cannot do in our schools. They don't have the ability to do that. They're not law enforcements. And then also with a lot of the districts that I spoke to, they were small districts, they had two schools or three schools. Some only had one school that had the guardian program. So when we're looking at these numbers, and we can get those numbers off of the state site, they sent that to us, that we could find those numbers that is needed for that. But I just think that we definitely am with, agreeing with Ms. Morgan as well, we have to know what our community, what they want as well, when we're looking at this, because we're already providing this service to them.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Do we have any additional comments? Ms. Juvenelli?
I think this might be our third briefing on it. I think we've had a briefing on it with every superintendent that we've had. Okay, thank you. So I appreciate it being back up on the agenda because I've been advocating for it since 2019, because there's no price on safety. And how the actual program looks is going to be individualized to what we as a board decide and the needs. And I think that after watching the investigation, there was a whole FSBA about, I think it might have been two years ago, I think it was just before the pandemic, they gave us a whole, the whole breakdown of what happened and what went wrong in Parkland. And it was very interesting to note that their lives could have been saved if the security guard and the athletic director or had a gun. The athletic director, I was actually lucky enough at this last FSBA to actually sit and talk with a widow that her husband went back in, the athletic director spouse, he went back in to save the children or to save them, but he was, he had no weapon. So he lost his life trying to do what he could at that moment, but he was helpless. Things would have been different if he had had, if he had had a gun. I mean, that's a fact. His wife told me that. He would be here today if he had. She felt confident in that. I talked to a parent, the Lissa Law that came in place, I talked to the actual mother of that, of her daughter that, you know, and she's also on the Broward County School Board. I talked to both of them, and I asked them specifically about the guardian program, what they thought of it. Because it was very important to hear it from somebody that's actually knows what it would, what it's in place, was in place now for. And they actually told me, both of them said that they would not like to see teachers carrying guns. They were very adamant about that, but they believed in the guardian program and believed in having it. And so I think there's a way that we can do it that would meet the, meet the needs and understandings of the community where they would be acceptable to it and where it would still have the opportunity to keep our children safe. I would hate for an incident to happen that where we could have used a guardian and there could have been one that stepped up. I don't want to be sitting up here if that day were to happen and we didn't have that, that we have not tried to use every ounce of safety protocols in place before an incident. And I would sleep better thinking that we had that in place. My, I have, do have a couple of questions, though, regarding where's the sheriff at with this program, because I think that's key and vital. I wouldn't, would not want to do anything exclusive. I would only want an SRO, to enhance the SRO program. I would never want it to replace, ever. I am very supportive of our sheriffs and what they do. Yes, their job is very different. Basically, a guardian, a guardian is there to save a life if that's it. They're not there for any other reason at all. And I think that maximizing our safety is probably key, back to what I was thinking about sleeping better at night, knowing that we've done everything as a board to keep our kids safe. And this is just one little piece to add to everything that we need. I still am curious about metal detectors. I still think they're important. So I'm not, I would like to have that continued conversation with this because I think that's another piece of saving, of safety and making sure that our kids are safe. So thank you for the presentation again today and bringing it back to the forefront again. I really truly appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Any other questions or comments at the moment? Mr. Persons?
I'll make this brief. I don't see the need to try to reinvent the wheel here. This program is in some of the largest counties in the state, districts in the state, also some of the smallest districts in the state. It's an ongoing program. There's no problems. I don't see why we would have to do a huge polling of our teachers and everything else. It's working. It's an extra layer of security. And I just, no, I couldn't live with myself, as Melissa said, if something were to happen and we could have had this program in some form or another instituted. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just go back to Ms. Juvenelli's question, and I know Chief Newlin can speak to this explicitly. Chief, to Ms. Juvenelli's point about where is our current sheriff, because there, in the past, watching formal presentations of this issue, there's been some conversation back and forth. And at the same time, could you address, I know the conversations you had with some of the other police chiefs within the community as much as you can disclose?
I can say from speaking to the sheriff that he is in support of the guardian program. We didn't talk about specifics of that type of program, but talking about the topic of guardian program, he is in support of it and would support the school district. I have spoken to the other chiefs. I wanted to make sure they're aware that we were having this discussion. And again, this, it's not knowing the detail of the program and how we would apply the program. They're open, they're in support, they're open to listening to what type of program we would bring forward. But I wanted to make sure they were aware.
Thank you, chief. And Board Member Juvenelli, to your other point regarding technology related to additional security as students enter and exit from buildings, primarily enter our buildings, that is an ongoing dialogue, and we will be coming back to you and to this board regarding some of that technology that we've used here within our own facility and potential application in our school sites as well.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Langford Fleming?
So I do support the guardian program. I have done a lot of research, especially last year. I know we've had some great discussions and being out in the community, I've, there are quite a number of people that support it. As far as the point of us being Senate bills 7026, 7030, I'm of the mindset as, yes, we're meeting the expectations, but why not exceed them? I don't think there's ever a time where you can think, man, after a school shooting, I wish I hadn't had an officer on campus. So I think adding additional layer of security is really important. I just, I want our security to be the best in the state. So I do have a couple of questions, though. When a, now, obviously, just to point out, if we were to have educators or teachers, not saying that we would, but if we were to have that as part of the way we enforce our guardian program, there are 140 hours of training. How does that compare to a regular police officer's training when it comes to active shooters, because that is the only job of a guardian? And secondly, once they get through the 144 hours of training, is there every year a continuing ed course or something they have to do to stay up to, you know, just to refresh their mind about a situation?
I can tell you as far as the guardian program, that there is the initial 144 hours, as I mentioned. And yes, there is definitely an annual minimum qualification, you must qualify annually. However, I can tell you without mentioning certain districts out there and what their programs are, it's not, very common that there's been ongoing training beyond the initial. So I've seen where they train once a month on a topic. I've seen where they train or qualify quarterly firearm type, some type of firearm tactics or training. So it's ongoing. So there is that commitment from that person that beyond the initial and qualifying and passing the initial, you must maintain that level of proficiency moving forward. And as far as law enforcement goes, as far as how much they train, there is the state requirement of how much law enforcement must train or qualify on an annual basis. As far as hours go, it varies based on each department. And they do, we do hundreds of hours of training. Usually, it's at least quarterly in some type of tactics or firearm training, then the qualifications once a year, but it's, you know, it's ongoing, it's continuous. So it really depends on the agency as far as that goes, as far as how many hours each one trains.
Okay. Just one more thing. If we were to adopt this, can, we would, we would be able to include the charter schools in this program? Yes, or?
It would be up to the charter schools.
Okay.
That's separate, that'd be up to them.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I'm not saying I'm against this. Well, I feel that we need to look at every little detail. Our SROs are, you know, safety and security of students and faculty, systematically, unsystematic patrol of campuses. That's what they, that's what their jobs are. The guardians will become, or the armed guards, if you will, will become the employee of the district. Am I correct? So we would, we would be their employer. They would have the sheriff's department or Fort Myers PD or City of Cape Coral, they would have nothing to say to them within the school because they become the employees of the district. So we control them and we tell them, you know, here's your uniform, here's your gun, walk around, have safety or whatever, security on the back of your shirt, and just walk the halls all day with conjunctions with the sheriff or Fort Myers PD or CCPD, correct?
Ms. Jordan, if that's a question, I think that's an item for the board to discuss. If that is, that's that either or option back on slide five. You've moved down a uniformed path to a guardian being a uniformed individual who's hired specifically to be a guardian, who would have a T-shirt and a uniform. There's also an option to consider that this would be already currently employees who would just complete the guardian training and be armed and available under that, under that provision.
Thank you. I was looking, and I, yeah, I understood that part, but I was hoping it would not be one of our teachers or one of our cafeteria workers or a bus driver who all of a sudden now have to jump into, instead of worrying about where these kids are going in their classroom, worried about putting, going into action here versus an individual who was just hired into that role as the armed guard guardian.
That would be a decision for the board moving forward that we'd have to make in the shade. I know, obviously, if we chose the uniformed approach, it wouldn't stay in the shade very long, but that would be a decision the board would have to, would have to make. Chief, can I ask one quick question? Can you, and then from the trainings from the other districts to Ms. Jordan's point, is a guardian required to leave their classroom and go seek the assailant?
It's going to depend on, well, a couple of things it'll depend on. From talking to the districts, you have some that don't use instructional, some that do use non-instructional. So that, I mean, depend on who that guardian may be, but the idea is to stay with the classroom.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you for that. So now, I'm staying in, I'm staying with my classroom. What's my purpose then? That person's out in the hallway. So that, to me, does not make sense. So if I am, and maybe, maybe I'm just not seeing it right, but if that individual is someone who's supposed to be with our is someone who's supposed to be with our children or supposed to be in a specific, specific place, what is, to me, that makes no sense. It defeats the purpose of that person who's that additional person out there that's gonna stop a person coming in or help or assist the Sheriff's Department, Cape or Fort Myers. That's just my thought process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I believe Ms. Morgan was next.
So, I just wanted to clarify. I think I may not have been clear and I don't think Chair Persons understood me. My, my comment about involving parents and staff is not about whether or not we adopt the program. It's about the program that we adopt. So in other words, the, the simple decision is yes or no, adopt the program. The difficult decision will be how we implement. And that's the part that I believe does require significant family and staff input. So, just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Mr. Persons?
The guardian program, from what I've researched, and I'm not an expert, I won't say that, but if it's a teacher in the room, their duty is to, and they've been trained to do this, if someone were to come through that door, they protect their child. As far as the perpetrator coming in, once, if they were able to get past a sheriff's officer and start to go toward a room, if they were aware that our district has a guardian program, they don't know what room might have a guardian if we went with that route versus the armed guards. It's, it's an extra layer of security, of a deterrence is really what it is. And, no, I would not see a teacher, even if he had law enforcement training and everything else and volunteered for this, I would not see him ever leaving the room. And from what I understand from programs I've read about, that is not how they picture them doing. They are just there as a deterrence. That's just how I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Why don't I ask, uh, Mr. Superintendent, I believe you'd said Member Patrica had some questions. If you wanted to read those into the record, please?
Yes, sir. One of the questions was about, do the police chiefs at the other locations support the guardian program? Chief Newland has done that in the past. They have not supported it, but depending on, well, I think, I want to make sure I get this right, Chief, based upon what we develop, they could be in support of it.
Yes, sir.
Um, which would beg the question, we should engage with them more and, and have some conversation about, um, with them. That's it really for that particular one. Where do we find the finding for this program and what do we cut in order to fund it? I think you have to make the determination as a board as to what you want as a model and determine what the fiscal impact was. So, um, I don't know that we have to find funding depending on which direction you would proceed, um, but if we did go with the other option for a uniform presence and specifically an employee as an armed guard, then there would be impact to that funding and we would have to, as a staff, go out and research and, and find that information and bring it back to you. The other question was how we will determine where guardians are placed. All schools, high schools, schools above a certain enrollment threshold? I think those are questions that we need to answer as a group. I think it also speaks to if we were to deploy a guardian, if we were to comment that this would be today just at high schools or just at elementary schools, it gives away some of our, um, security as it relates to this particular program. And finally, it's my understanding, this is their question, it's my understanding the guardians would be utilized in our schools as an added layer of protection. Is this correct or do we intend to use SROs with guardians? I will tell you that this recommendation has to come from me to the board to adopt this. I would not place myself in any type of position where this would not be seen as just a force multiplier, meaning these people would be in concert with the SROs that we already have. Our SROs are critical parts of our school communities, of our young people and staff's culture, and they provide that immediate access to armed law enforcement in these cases. And for those of you in the public or may, may not know, in each one of our high schools and some of our larger middle schools, this board has supported two SROs, not just one. So as the enrollment has risen, we have increased the number of SROs present on our campus. Those are the questions from the other board member.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any other comments or questions at this point? Okay. I'm gonna go over a couple of things myself then. Couple of things first off, um, I truly, truly appreciate the work of our law enforcement and SROs, what they do, what they do in keeping my kids and everyone else's kids safe. As we talked about, this is not a replacement for that program. So, uh, I believe as the superintendent had mentioned, uh, this would be a, a force multiplier. Uh, one thing I can tell you is I want to do anything I can to keep my kids safe and everyone else's kids in this campus. It is important how things have changed over these past couple of years even. It's a scary world out there and it's something I'm constantly thinking about as a parent right now. Um, I've had much thought and discussion over the guardian program. It is something that I have, uh, been in support of and something would be supportive. One of the things I'd like to go back to is the intent of the program on the first slide was to fill the role of security without incurring an additional cost for the school. That's one issue that I believe we would need to address and look at. For me, I'd like to keep the option of, um, existing personnel on the table. This is something, again, that has a hundred and forty-four hours of training. These are qualified and certified people. These are not people just off the street. These are not people that are coerced. They volunteer for this and they're held to very high standards. And I would expect anyone within this department and the sheriff to hold them to those standards. So, to paraphrase, they're not Yosemite Sam. This is something that these people go through these qualifications and through this training. That's, that's, and what their duty is, is to stop an active assailant. And I believe as Mr. Persons had indicated, that would be, for example, uh, inside the classroom. It wouldn't be to, you know, as I said, we'll go specifically, obviously, you know, if we go to a shade session for that, not going out into, you know, going out into the hallways and stuff like that. These are literally, as I hate to say, the last resort. And as I said, I'll do whatever I can to keep kids in this district safe. And it's something that I think we do need to look into for this. Up in FSBA, I did talk to different, I don't want to go through the counties just for security reasons, but, uh, ones that had both program, uh, the guardian program that had, uh, ones that used existing personnel, ones that didn't. The ones that have used existing personnel, they said they were happy with that decision. They have not had any significant issues. I've been trying to do research with that and have not come up with any other additional issues. Not saying there's not, but that's the one thing, at least I'm looking for that. So, um, again, we also have to emphasize there's a psychological evaluation, background check, uh, drug testing. As I said, it's, um, uh, we have this in forty-six counties, so we have the majority of Florida. This is a state-vetted program. This is not something that just came on yesterday where it's unique to this county. I think that's something we need to look at and can look at, you know, as the chief or as the director had mentioned, within some other counties. So, I'd like to kind of see where we're at with this. Uh, I would be, at least myself, be in favor of moving forward with the guardian program and setting some of these parameters. So, this board has talked about it for many years and I think it's time we look into implementing that. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Juvenelli.
One question. Would this, this is actually for Attorney Bruno. Would this be something we would have a policy on it as well? And to govern the, you know, however, once we make the, the determination of the criteria and so forth, would that be a policy? But how does that, so how does that work with shade? Thank you.
Well, we most likely will have to have some type of policy. The process would be something that will be controlled by safety and security. And because you're talking about safety and security as to where and how and when, that will be covered so that we can have an executive session on that.
So let me ask, um, the superintendent, um, as well as Board Attorney Dupree Bruno, what would this process look like? Obviously, we have to go forward as a board here and figure out where we want to go forward, but what would, what would this process look like?
Well, the first step in my process would be continuing our one-on-ones to have some additional discussion now that you have publicly sort of stated both your, some of your preferences as well as some of your reservations. I think it's important to continue to explore those. I think it's really important for all, I was gonna say trustees again, for all board members to have that conversation with me, to be thinking about what we discussed today. This will generate more questions on your behalf for me and Executive Director Dave Newland to expand upon, have some more conversation about. So that would be number one. Number two, I think we have some additional research based upon your questions today regarding having additional dialogue with the sheriff, having additional dialogue with our other police chiefs to make sure we understand a little bit about what the sheriff's office might be planning for what a training program would or could look like in our county. Um, and then additionally, um, some more information from our chiefs as to what they could and would be able to support. Um, I will defer to Attorney Dupree Bruno as to whether additional conversations because of the desire to get into specificity would occur publicly at this dais or whether they would move to shaded sessions. Um, I just, I think the, the, it's not that we're trying to hide our safety and security procedures from our public, but I think it is important for us to have some security procedures that are known and, and addressed and that our community knows and understands why the, the safety of our children is paramount and that security around those procedures is so, so important. So that would be, that would be, I suggest I defer to our attorney.
At some point, Mr. Chairman and Board, um, the board will actually have to take a formal vote to say that we want to have the guardian program. So we want to put this on in, an agenda item when it is ready to be put on the agenda item. After we've had some more, um, discussions with the superintendent, we have some more information. Thereafter, it depends on what we will be talking about. So it'll be a case-by-case basis. Some things we will be able to discuss in public, some things because we have to protect our, our, um, blueprints, for example, different things will be done in executive session. So really just case by case as the different topics come up, then I will be able to advise if it's in public or if it will be in the executive session.
So one more follow-up to that, and that would be that we'd have those individual one-on-ones, a chance to re-explore, explore some of what I heard today about moving forward as well as some of what I heard about making sure we engage our community, specifically our teachers and our parents. But at the same time, a, an executive session so that we could discuss in more specific detail, once those details were better known and additional information was able to be provided from, um, our local sheriff's department as well as our other chiefs of police that help support our SRO program, because we, I've heard that we want to work in concert with our SROs. So we want to include their leadership's voice in this process. Once we were to get to some form of consensus as to what our program would look like to Dupree Bruno's, um, point, then it would come back because we'd understand better what we were approving when I, if I brought the recommendation forward to approve a guardian program, we would know what that guardian program looked like. Um, I think it would be, um, I, I, for me, I think it would be irresponsible on my part to bring forth the approval of a guardian program without us having a deeper discussion about the details and the specificity of it. So I left that part out because we would get there too eventually. I think we need to have some other sessions prior to, prior to making that, um, recommendation.
Thank you, Board Attorney and Mr. Superintendent. I appreciate that. Agree with that. I would like to, um, figure out a way, as I said, to move forward. As I said, I understand that we have a lot to look at, but I also don't want this to sit out there in purgatory either. So I think we do need to get some movement on this and figure out where we're all at on that. So, seems that there is at least a general movement forward on the guardian program itself. At least it seems up here from listening to everyone. Um, I don't know if it would be something we could look into then, setting either an executive session at that point. Mr. Superintendent, how would the board feel about that at this moment? We have? Okay. Yeah. So I would support that also. Okay.
Is there a desire for the board to have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
Is there a desire for the board to have such an executive session prior to the holiday? Or would you prefer we work now with staff following this meeting to schedule something for January?
What's our board, what do our board think here?
I believe January.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would be good with January as well. Do we, so, we're looking at Mr. and Superintendent, unless I misunderstood anyone, that we'd look at, uh, going towards an executive session for this, um, in January as well as you're, you and, uh, Director Newland getting us additional details?
I will go ahead then and go ahead and meet with Kathy Dupree Bruno, make sure that we are discussing items that fit within the executive session, that aspect of the law, and then work with staff to ensure that we get you a date certain in January.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'd also like to, uh, thank my fellow board members. I know these are not easy discussions and I appreciate the dialogue up here. Thank you, Director Newland, as well for your presentation. Uh, if there's not anything else, let's move on to public comment. Board Attorney Dupree Bruno, could you go into public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have nobody here to, um, provide us with public comment today.
Okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience that has not filled out a card or anyone here that would be wishing to submit public comment and talk? Saying none, let's move on then. Um, let's go to, um, good of the order and board comments. I will, uh, let's go down the line. I will start with, uh, Member Juvenelli.
I don't have a lot. I just, um, we have a legislative delegation meeting tomorrow morning. That's an all-day thing and I look forward to that. And, and I saw that it's a very, um, in very long agenda for tomorrow, so I hope, I don't know who all is attending, but I, um, plan on going there in the morning for a little bit. Um, other than that, I'm trying to think of anything. I really don't have anything at this point. Good, good work today. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Ms. Jordan?
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Persons?
Yes, I will be presenting tomorrow at the legislative, uh, session there. And, uh, it's scheduled to be third on the list in the morning, so it'll be early. It starts at nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Ms. Jada Lang, Ms. Langford Fleming?
I don't really have anything other than I just appreciate all the hard work that was put behind the presentations, Dana. That takes, um, a lot of time, a lot of staff, and I appreciate all the hard work that was put into, um, today's workshop. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
So from the FSBA Board of Directors meeting, COSPA, the Consortium of State School Boards Association, in January of twenty-three, the transition committee that's been in the process of creating the, um, uh, framework for the, for COSPA, will meet to interview executive director candidates and appoint the board. The annual meeting will be held in March, uh, March twenty-ninth to April third in Tampa. Um, and then the only other thing I would bring forward from that meeting is that FSBA dues will increase two percent or five hundred and twenty-three dollars to twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for twenty-two, twenty-three. I do want to take this opportunity to congratulate the Lee County Technical Colleges for receiving recognition for the number-two ranking in Florida for post-secondary industry certifications. Um, and I want to say congrats to the, uh, to twenty-twenty-three Lee County Principal of the Year, Brandy Machia, at Ray B. Potoff Elementary, and to the twenty-twenty-three Assistant Principal of the Year, Dr. Joseph Restino, at Harnes Marsh Middle. Um, I do want to remind the board, or let's not remind, that's probably not the right verb, but we, we now are going to have an elected superintendent. It is critical, since we have two things we can do. One is approve the budget and the other is policy. It is critical as we move forward that we recognize that we want to make absolutely certain we put in policy, in job descriptions, uh, anything that we have the power to influence at this time. We want to, um, inscribe that, uh, because, uh, the relationship between an elected superintendent and a board and an appointed superintendent and the board is very different. And, um, we lose a lot of control with an elected superintendent. So to the extent that we can put, um, guardrails in policy and other aspects of our operation, I think it's important that we take that into consideration. Also, I notified all of you yesterday within twenty-four hours that I will be bringing a motion forward this evening, and I still intend to do that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Um, I don't have any additional comments except for, um, one of the, uh, the classes up at the FSBA was in guard to retention, hiring, and if anyone up here hasn't And if anyone up here hasn't seen him or anyone out in the crowd, I would ask you to look up Principal Adam Lane, I believe is his name, in Haynes County and how he deals with his retention and some of his hiring practices. It was really an uplifting presentation. So for those people in this room, if you haven't seen him, I'd go check him out. He has some news articles and video coverage. Besides that, that is all I have at the moment. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any comment?
Not, and just a few. You don't say no if you have something to say. First of all, I'd like to apologize publicly to the board yesterday during Good of the Order. I've already spoken to the chair. I did superintendent's comments, and that was inappropriate. Thank you, the chair, for not correcting the superintendent on the spot. I appreciate the opportunity to come forward and provide the apology directly before I will pay closer attention to, I thought it was a comment period. I realized it was for Good of the Order afterwards. Want to thank the Fort Myers Beach Elementary parents who turned out last night for a very spirited town hall. It was a good conversation, again, a chance to dialogue and listen. Our biggest focus was that we're hearing them, that we're listening, that we may not always agree on what, all the pathways forward, but the team continues to develop those options for you. And last night was helpful with them moving forward. I'm pleased to say that Hector Cafaretta continues to be moving on progress. This coming Friday, your superintendent will be at Hector Cafaretta in a kindergarten classroom, which will allow the kindergarten teacher to be over at the new mobile campus, getting their rooms set up for openings beginning as early as next week. I think those are all mine, except to once again remind everyone how lucky we were to have a football team at Dunbar High School competing for the state championship. Unfortunately, they came up a few points short, but their season, I'm sure the young men and coaches have a better perspective on it today than they had on Friday night. And they're going to realize they've accomplished a great deal. And my, I'm told it's a young team, so we'll see how they, how they come back from this adversity and how they apply it to next year's season. Look forward to seeing you all too this evening.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorney DePree Bruno, do you have any comment?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will have a student performance at 5:30 tonight filed by our action meeting at 6 o'clock. Seeing no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.